I'm going to call the city council meeting for February the 7th to order 2012. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Here.
Tennant?
Here.
Farrell?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Would you join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first thing I would like to do tonight on the mayor's announcement, proclamations, and recognitions is to recognize the Boy Scout Troop 116 tonight. Would you all stand to be recognized by the city council?[55.01][55.01](APPLAUSE). Thank you all. Thank you. Well, right out of the chute, folks, the mayor has something he wants to walk on tonight that has not been on the agenda. We've had a situation occur on the AMP over the last week or so, started early last week and was confirmed late last week, that we were under the assumption that the Washington County Fairgrounds was under Washington County jurisdiction, but in reality, it's under city jurisdiction. So, we have got to, we don't have any enabling legislation to do a conditional use out there. So, that's what your charge will be tonight, to look at that and to, Jeremy will give you the details on that, but I am walking this on, so...
And the first thing we need to do is suspend the rules and place on the...
Yes.
Move, move, suspend the rules and go to the next reading.
Second. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
And now, Mr. Mayor, since it's an ordinance, I should probably read it.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend Section 16103B2 of the Unified Development Code to allow outdoor music establishments to be considered as a conditional use in RA zones and to enact an emergency clause. Whereas, the city of Fayetteville adopted an outdoor music establishment ordinance in 2002 that permits outdoor amplified music with certain safeguards in place to protect nearby residents and businesses. And whereas, the Walton Art Center needs to move its Arkansas Music Pavilion from the mall area to property owned by the Washington County Fair Association, which is zoned RA residential agricultural. And whereas, the UDC does not currently allow an outdoor music establishment in an RA zoning district. And whereas, many properties zoned RA are large and may be suitable for an outdoor music establishment with proper safeguards. And whereas, unless the city council immediately amends its UDC to permit an outdoor music establishment to be allowed as a conditional use within an RA zoned district, the Walton Art Center may not have sufficient time to be able to move the AMP to the Washington County Fairground location and obtain a conditional use permit, which will safeguard the peace, safety, and compatibility with neighboring districts. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 16103B2 of the Unified Development Code by enacting and adding Use Unit 35 Outdoor Music Establishments as a conditional use for zoning district residential agricultural. Section 2, Emergency Clause, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines that, in order to protect the peace and health of our citizens, an emergency is declared so that this ordinance, requiring a conditional use permit, be obtained prior to the establishment of an outdoor music establishment in an RA zoned district, should be and hereby is declared to be effective immediately upon its passage and approval.
Chairman?
About a week ago, as the mayor mentioned, the Arkansas Music Pavilion Organization announced its intentions to move from its current location at the Northwest Arkansas Mall, where it's successfully operated since 2005 under a conditional use permit, to a site located at the Washington County Fairgrounds, at least for this upcoming season. Washington County Fairgrounds is located off of Highway 112, Garland Avenue, actually very close proximity to the Meadow Valley Trail that the city is constructing. The new location has housed the Washington County Fair for many, many years, along with other events associated with that fair. Until recently, most, including a lot of city staff, were under the impression that the Washington County Fairgrounds were actually part of Washington County. We were able to confirm late last week that's not the case. They're in association, they have their own board, and they own the property as a private entity. Because that has come to our attention, what we're proposing tonight is an ordinance amendment. The property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural. Outdoor music establishments are not currently allowed by a conditional use permit in that zone. They're allowed in a lot of zones, but not RA. What this would do would simply enable the AMP organization to apply for a conditional use permit. It would go through the normal planning commissioner review process by conditional use permit. And there would be proper safeguards likely reviewed with the first conditional use permit in 2005. We would review those, where the actual stage is located, where the music's pointing, where emergency access is located, all the safeguards that we would normally do for an establishment such as that. And that would allow us to do that. Currently, we're not even able to accept an application because it's only for, it's not allowed within RA zone. So, we worked with the original, one of the original sponsors of the outdoor music establishment, sitting to my left here, back in 2002, to come up with something that we felt would be appropriate. Keep in mind, this is for all RA districts, so it's not just for this one application. It would be enabling legislation for any RA district within the city. And we would look at any one of those, again, with compatibility in mind, what residential uses may be surrounding, what kind of effects the noise, what safeguards might be implemented to ensure that if one is proposed, it would be permitted appropriately. So, our proposal is to amend that section to simply allow this as a conditional use permit in the RA zone.
What questions do we have for Jeremy on this? I don't normally do this, but this is some point of time since to think. Bob?
I don't have a question, Mayor. I believe we should suspend the rules and go to the next reading.
Second. Okay, let me see if there's any public comments. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, bring it back to the council. We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend Section 16103B2 of the Unified Development Code to allow outdoor music establishments to be considered as a conditional use in RA zones and to enact an emergency clause.
Move, suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading?
Who's the second?
I don't know. Justin, somebody.
Justin.
Pick somebody, Lisa.
I'll go second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Yes.
You good? Okay. Would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend Section 16103B2 of the Unified Development Code to allow outdoor music establishments to be considered as a conditional use in RA zones and to enact an emergency clause.
Any final comments from the council on this? Lisa, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Thank you, council, very much.
And now, we need a separate vote on the emergency clause, Mayor.
That's right.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Lisa?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Thank you all. Okay, on the consent agenda tonight, number one, we have the approval of the January 17, 2012 city council meeting minutes. Number two, airport minimum standards. A resolution approving the revised minimum standards for federal executive airport direct field as approved and recommended by the Airport Advisory Board. Number three, Garver LLC, a resolution approving an agreement for professional engineering services with Garver LLC in the amount of not to exceed $94,200 for engineering design related to the Town Branch Trail. Number four, AOS LLC, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a high-performance service chassis and network switch with storage in the amount of $192,704.43 from AOS LLC pursuant to a state procurement contract and approving a budget adjustment. Number five, public access television fee revenue, a resolution approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $2,610 recognizing public access television fee revenue for 2011. Number six, L3 Mobile Vision Incorporated, resolution authorizing the purchase of 31 digital video systems for the police department from L3 Mobile Vision Incorporated in the total amount of $181,547.55 pursuant to a bid waiver authorized by ordinance number 4551. I will accept the consent agenda. Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as read. Would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Under unfinished business, we have none. Under new business, number one, RZN 11-3999, 2514 West Lori Drive Razorback Park Golf Course, an ordinance resoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 11-3999, for approximately 32 acres, located at 2514 West Lori Drive from RSF1 Residential Single Family, 1 unit per acre, to RA Residential Agricultural. Kit?
It be ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from RSF1 Residential Single Family, 1 unit per acre, to RA Residential Agricultural as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made apart hereof. Section 2, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Chairman?
Razorback Golf Course is located on the west side of Dean Solomon Road, north of Mount Comfort. This property was developed in the late 1950s and 60s as a golf course, when, actually, it was still in the county. Subsequently, the city of Fayetteville annexed that property, and it's currently zoned RSF1, which is single-family residential, 1 unit per acre. This particular zoning classification does not allow a golf course by right or by conditional use, so essentially, what the golf course is operating as currently is a non-conforming use. That non-conforming uses aren't allowed to expand or improve their properties, they're simply allowed to extend and remain in situ, essentially. The applicant has submitted an application to rezone approximately 33 acres of the overall 114 acres to, from RSF1 to RA Residential Agricultural. This will allow the applicant the opportunity to make improvements to the golf course by conditional use permit and allow for him to improve that facility as needed, at least within this 32 acres, 33 acres. Planning commission voted eight to zero in favor of the request, and staff is also recommending approval.
What questions do we have for Jeremy on this, council? What public comment do we have on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Do you think we can go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, go to the second reading. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 11-3999, for approximately 33 acres, located at 2514 West Lori Drive, from residential single-family, 1 unit per acre, to residential agricultural.
I knew it was suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading. We have a motion and a second, go to the third and final reading. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 11-3999, for approximately 33 acres, located at 2514 West Lori Drive, from residential single-family, 1 unit per acre, to residential agricultural.
What final comments do we have from the council on this?
Just a quick question for Jeremy.
Yes, sure, absolutely.
Jeremy, it says this is submitted by Ron Cavanaugh. Is that the owner?
I believe so, of the actual property?
Yeah.
It may be under an LLC, but that's the contact that we've had.
I was just wondering if that was the Ronnie Cavanaugh that used to play football in Arkansas. Anyway.
He may have stopped against Texas one time. Anyway. Any other final comments from the council on this? All right. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, amend Chapter 163 use conditions. An ordinance to enact 163.17 wrecking, demolition, and scrap metal processing into the Unified Development Code and to adopt an emergency clause. Kit?
Whereas, the large machines used to shred automobiles and other vehicles and large metal structures or machines, large metal structures or machines create unacceptably loud noise levels, as well as unplanned occasional explosions and other unacceptable consequences of their use for our citizens and especially nearby neighbors. And therefore, these machines should not be allowed to operate within the city limits of Fayetteville and damage the peace, quiet, health, and safety of Fayetteville citizens by their operation. Whereas, and whereas, machines that crush vehicles or other metal objects can cause the harmful release of hazardous liquids, such as oil, fuel, antifreeze, mercury, lead, acid, et cetera, which could escape into the soil and eventually into our water supply, unless such crushing is done after all the hazardous liquids have been properly drained and the crushing machine is located on a permanent, properly designed, impervious surface, which will catch any residual hazardous liquids that could result from the crushing of a vehicle. And whereas, the public health and safety requires that these new controls prohibiting car-vehicle shredding and regulating car metal crushing become effective immediately. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enact Section 163.17 wrecking, demolition, and scrap metal processing of the Unified Development Code by enacting a new subsection 167 as shown on the attached Exhibit A, which is hereby adopted. Section 2, Emergency Clause, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines that, in order to protect the peace, health, and safety of the citizens of Fayetteville, this ordinance must become effective immediately upon its passage and approval, and therefore, an emergency is declared to exist such as this ordinance will become effective immediately upon its passage and approval.
Chairman?
The I-2 General Industrial District that exists within the city is relatively limited where it's located, mostly within the industrial park, but there are some sites outside the actual industrial park proper, such as near the solid waste fleet facility. There's some properties there under private ownership as well. That district is, quote, "designed to provide areas for manufacturing and industrial activities", end quote. However, even in this most intense zoning district, we still prohibit certain uses. What they do, what they do allow are such things such as heavy industrial uses, scrap metal and refuse processing, lumber and wood products, paper allied products, petroleum and related industries, wrecking and demolition services, and we have a number of those businesses throughout the city. There are some problematic issues, however, that we've seen existing within the city and within other communities around us, both in this state and outside the state, around some metal processing operations that we feel are relatively impossible to be able to correct once they're here. They're really hard to resolve due to the inherent noise. You really can't put them inside a building, you can't muffle their noise, their environmental impacts associated with several of these uses, and so, we're bringing an ordinance forward for you all to consider prohibiting outright some of these uses and then putting some best management practices and some regulations around some of the others. We don't really feel like car shredding, which is one of the uses that we've indicated. Automobile shredding is a use that can be find an appropriate place within the city, and so, we're proposing that be prohibited altogether. We're proposing in Section B of this particular ordinance, which you can see on page five of six is really the meat of the ordinance. Section B involves the metal crushing operations. A lot of times, these are things like white goods, such as washers and dryers, they can be automobiles, they can be all sorts of things that may or may not have hazardous fluids within them. So, we've recommended five things here. Basically, all metal crushing shall be set back a minimum of 100 feet from an exterior property line. Number two, explosions of any kind are not permitted. Number three, vehicles shall be properly drained. They should, those fluids should be kept in separate containers and disposed of in a lawful manner. We have things, as Mr. Williams mentioned, fuel, oil, transmission fluid, antifreeze, mercury switches, all sorts of things that come out of these different types of equipment, primarily automobiles. Number four, mobile crushers should be situated on an impervious floor surface such as concrete. We have issues currently, environmental hazards where automobile, where they are drained, fluids are drained, but they're drained onto the ground, and then that seeps into the soil, seeps into our water supply, and then into our drinking water ultimately. So, this would provide an impervious surface whereby those fluids could be collected. And then finally, waste tires from vehicle crushing specifically shall be disposed of in compliance with all ADQ environmental regulations. We feel like this is a, primarily a public safety issue, it's also a compatibility issue. We couldn't find a place within the city of Fayetteville that we would recommend any kind of conditional use permit or zoning to allow this type of use. And so, we feel it's important to look at now, before it does come before you, and prohibit certain of those activities and then provide some standards by which anyone wishing to operate would need to live by. So, we're recommending, we work with the utilities department and a lot with Mr. Williams on this, try to find something that's amicable and presentable to you all.
Questions for Jeremy? Matthew?
Every part of the ordinance makes sense to me, but I did have a question about the emergency clause. I was wondering why that was included.
Well, the emergency clause, and this is a very strange agenda in that I've actually recommended two ordinances with emergency clause. Many cities, for some reason, attach emergency clause to every one of their ordinances. I don't believe that's correct. I think it should only be done if it's necessary to protect the public health and safety. I do think that it's important, in this particular case, we don't want someone in the interim, in the next 31 days, to move an automobile shredder into the city limits, because then we would have issues about a prior non-conforming use or something like that. So, I think it would be much more important to go ahead and get this effective immediately so that we're not faced with a problem that is, would then be extremely difficult and possibly expensive to deal with.
Okay. Are we worried about existing processing facilities going ahead and draining all of their vehicles as fast as they can before the...
Well, yeah, and that also, we think that they're going to be pretty good citizens. We just want to make sure they're going to do it right, that they're going to have especially a permanent facility so that that's covered from the weather and that has the impervious surface that will protect it even if they somehow miss something, because you can't, I don't think, fully drain, completely drain every possible problem. So, that's why we wanted to have this permanent structure with impervious surface and protect it from the weather to try to ensure that this would not escape their property and get into the soil or to the water.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Well, following up on that portion of the ordinance proposed, the, I wasn't sure that we could go back on an existing facility and require that they do these things.
I think that we can provide reasonable regulations that are necessary for the health and protection of our citizens within our city limits for activities that have been going forward. We're not prohibiting those activities, we're just saying, locate these activities in a safe place. And we've determined that this is what's necessary for the safety of our water and our citizens for you to operate this way. We're not saying, "Don't operate." We're saying, "We need you to operate safely if you're going to operate within Fayetteville."
Well, I'm really glad we're going to move forward with that.
I'll just add, as of today, I don't believe any of these operations are currently occurring within Fayetteville. They have in the past, and I would assume some of these will in the future, not, hopefully not the automobile shredding, since we're prohibiting that, but metal crushing, automobile crushing has occurred here in the past, and I would assume it will in the future, and this will simply give the guidance to those individuals of how to do it best.
Bobby?
I understand what prompted this, what's happened up north. It would probably be a good idea to do something before it becomes a problem, but just as a matter of, to get on the public record, Kit, I mentioned this before, but let's just, let's just say for the sake of argument that there's a parcel of land that the city is thinking about annexing, and there's a piece, there's a working business there with several employees that does this kind of business. What, are they going to be grandfathered, where are they going to be if they're making their livelihood from that and they're in a legal place right now? I know it's going out of limb, but I'm just saying, what happens then?
Well, normally, a business that's operating legally, when we annex it, will be continued, will be allowed to continue to operate as a non-conforming previous, pre-existing use. That doesn't mean that we could not still place some regulations upon it so that, you know, if there was a car crushing operation outside the city limits that was annexed in, I think that we could still require them to follow these safety measures that are within this ordinance in order to continue to operate, but they would still be allowed to operate.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Yes.
Actually, I just wanted to say one thing for the scout troop. Whenever I was a Boy Scout, we were taught leave no trace principles, and I think you guys are here for your citizenship and the community merit badge, right? Something to think about while we're talking about environmental regulations like this is how leave no trace principles can be applied in government. That's something I think about sometimes, and it might be something that you might think about while you put together your merit badge reports.
Thank you, very good point. Anybody else? Is there any public comment on this? Just hold on. And I'd like to say about public comment, everybody gets one turn at the microphone, introduce yourself and...
Wesley Steitz, I'm here with the scout troop, but I just had a question. I'm thinking of a situation that occurred not too long ago, just south of us. We had a large junkyard south of the Fayetteville Airport, which a outfit came in temporarily and cleaned it up, which I think involved crushing and shredding and other things. So, let's suppose someone wants to come in to, there's a junkyard basically right across the street from Fiesta Square, right kind of behind the Kentucky Fried Chicken. Would this ordinance prevent someone from coming in and operating for a month or so to get rid of those junk cars or not?
No, car crushing is regulated but allowed under this provision. We would require them to drain the vehicles and do it, and crush, do any crushing operations on an impervious surface that will catch any possible hazardous liquid. But no, it would be allowed to be done in that way as long as they follow the regulations within this ordinance.
By impervious surface, you mean something, would it be a permanent thing, would they pour a concrete pad or something?
We would think if there was going to be any long-term crushing, that certainly a concrete pad or asphalt or something like that is something that would be needed, not something that could be torn or destroyed. This is something that the planning department would look at, would look at what is proposed operation, is it just going to be, are they going to crush five cars and then that's it? Or are they going to be there regularly from now on?
Thank you.
Mayor, can I, sir, can I just make a comment to you on your question there? For example, the, behind the Kentucky Fried Chicken there, or similar place, it would have to go before a planning commission first, and it would have to be in an I zone, right, Jeremy? An industrial zone. And I don't think there's any I out in that area, so it would be, I get the point of your question, but it would have to be some kind of an industrial area before they could even apply for it's a planning commission.
Yeah, I guess my question really is, I mean, if I were a neighborhood, in that neighborhood, I'd be willing to pay someone to come in for a week to get that cleaned up. up.
It would probably be better for someone to come in and pick those things, those vehicles up and take them somewhere else and get them crushed in an industrial zone.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Okay, I'll bring you back to the council. What you want to do here?
Move, do we have a second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, go to the second reading. Lisa, would you please call the rub?
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
In ordinance to enact section 16317, wrecking, demolition, and scrap metal processing into the Unified Development Code and to adopt an emergency clause.
Spend the rules and go to the third and final reading. Second. We have a motion and a second, go to the third and final reading. Lisa, would you please call the rub?
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
In ordinance to enact section 16317, wrecking, demolition, and scrap metal processing into the Unified Development Code and to adopt an emergency clause.
Any final comments from the council on this?
A question, Mayor, are we voting on the emergency clause and the ordinance?
Well, there's not any final comments. Lisa, would you please call the rub?
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay, now the emergency clause.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Correct?
Yes.
All right. Lisa, would you please call the rub?
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
It requires six votes to pass, and it did receive six votes, so the emergency clause passed.
All right, thank you all. Number three, repeal 172.10 bicycle parking rack requirements. An ordinance to repeal 172.10 bicycle parking rack requirements in Unified Development Code and to enact a replacement 172.10. Kip?
Whereas section 172.10 bicycle parking rack requirements of the Unified Development Code has proven to be too restrictive in design and location requirements, and whereas the planning department recommends section 172.10 bicycle parking rack requirements be made more consistent with the 2010 Bicycle Parking Guidelines of the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one. At the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby repeal section 172.10 bicycle parking rack requirements of the Unified Development Code and enact a new section 172.10 bicycle parking rack requirements as shown in exhibit A attached here, too.
Chairman?
The City of Fayetteville first adopted our bicycle parking rack ordinance in 2001, and since then, it's remained largely unchanged. That ordinance required new commercial and multifamily residential uses with parking lots, essentially install an adequate number of bicycle parking racks determined as a percentage, basically a ratio of one bike per a certain number of parking spots. That ratio was really determined by looking at this Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals industry standards at the time. That association has updated their standards as of 2010 and made some new recommendations. So, that's one of the reasons we're looking at this, to look at our ratios and making recommendations for changes there. Secondly, it's much more of a local issue that we have one specific rack designed, the inverted U-shaped design, that's the only acceptable design for our required bicycle racks. Within the last couple of years specifically, we've noticed an increase in interest in changing some of those designs and allowing for a variety of alternative designs. We've seen actually an art project associated with the court facility that utilized some different racks, but they had to provide the required number of racks also by the inverted U design just to meet our, the city had to meet its own ordinances in that case, as we always do. So, in this particular case, the ordinance amendment would be to allow for alternative design to be considered. You'd still have the standard. If you wanted to do the standard rack, it's probably the cheapest one to do, but you would have an opportunity to propose an alternative rack design. So, assuming that it met with our approval, you're mounting it correctly, it's going to have adequate spacing to have two bicycles per rack, which is our parking space design, those hopefully would be approved in a number of different shapes and varieties. So, the proposal here is for basically to repeal the bicycle rack parking section of the parking code and add this new section here. We've updated the graphics to be more reflective of today's standards, and also the ratios, as I mentioned, go from non-residential development, I go from one to 30 spaces to one to 20, and residential, which is multifamily residential, goes from one per 30, I'm sorry, one per 50 to one per 30 dwelling units. And, I'll take any questions.
What questions do we have for Jeremy on this?
Mayor, Jeremy, this is just all new people that build and develop, correct?
That's correct. Be for new projects.
Do we have any public comment on this? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council. What's the wishes to the council?
Move, do we have a second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, go to the second reading. Tenet. Lisa, would you please call the rub?
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
In ordinance to repeal section 172.10 bicycle parking rack requirements of the Unified Development Code and to enact a replacement, section 172.10.
Move, we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, go to the third and final reading. Lisa, would you please call the rub?
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
In ordinance to repeal section 172.10 bicycle parking rack requirements of the Unified Development Code and to enact a replacement, section 172.10.
Any final comments from the council on this? Lisa, would you please call the rub?
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
All right, number four. Thank you all. I meant 176.03 exemptions, an ordinance to amend 176.03 exemptions of the outdoor lighting chapter of the UDC to allow the lights to remain on a tree on the square and to allow accent lighting on restaurant and bar patios. Kip?
Whereas city staff desires to leave the decorative light strands on one of the trees on the square year-round to accent this tree throughout the year, and whereas restaurant and bar owners have requested to be allowed to use strands of individual low-intensity decorative white lights on their patios during normal business hours, now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one. At the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby amend section 176.03 exemptions of the Unified Development Code by enacting a new subsections 176.03 J. 7 and 8 as shown below. Subsection 7, the Fayetteville Parks and Recreation Department may place decorative light strands upon one tree within the square garden area for year-round accent lighting. Subsection 8, strands of individual low-intensity white decorative lights used to illuminate the outdoor patio space of bars and restaurants during their normal business hours.
Okay. Chairman?
This is an ordinance amendment that's twofold. It would add two exemptions to our existing lighting ordinance originally passed in 2005. In 2007, we actually added a section to the ordinance to allow for accent lighting. Before, we did not have a section that allowed for accent lighting, and we realized, obviously, architectural features, buildings, landscaping are often uplighted or downlit as part of a project. Since the adoption of that ordinance, we have unfortunately required several businesses to remove certain portions of their lighting from restaurant patios and bars when they weren't pre-existing. So, there are some, for instance, on Dixon Street that were pre-existing their ordinance and they were allowed to remain, but others have had to be removed in order to get their final certificate of occupancy. When we investigated those sites and we're out there inspecting them, we had a very candid conversation with the restaurant owner and said, yes, we don't really feel like this is light pollution necessarily. I understand it's for ambiance, but we're also bound by the ordinances what we have in place, and I don't have the authority simply to waive that or vary that. But what we can do is bring something for you all to consider to do that. So, this is a proposal to allow an exemption for restaurants and bar patios to have that sort of ambient lighting, and it's very specifically written for decorative light strands upon, strands of individual low-intensity white decorative lights at door spaces of bars and patios during normal business hours. We don't feel like that goes against the intent whatsoever when you read the purpose and intent of the outdoor lighting ordinance. The second section of this particular amendment is specifically about the red tree that's lit out on the square. That was brought to the city's attention, I believe by the A&amp;P Commission, to look at allowing that to be lit year-round. They're not on all night. It's what a normal, we have timers on those lights essentially so that they go off at a certain hour, come back on at a certain hour. And so, this would allow an exemption because right now, those decorative seasonal lights are only allowed to be in place, I believe, for 60 or 90 days. So, that time is up, that's why the tree's been off since the 19th, I believe was the date that we were speaking with Connie Edmiston about. So, this particular exemption would allow for that particular tree to be lit, or one tree on the square to be lit for year-round for accent lighting.
Mayor, if I could just add, to be clear, this was not originally an item that was generated by the park staff. It came as a request from Marilyn Heffner, the Executive Director of the Advertising Promotion Commission, which was a part, I think, of maybe designation and identification of this area to be used for the underground and a connection to Crystal Bridges and the art patrons that may be in the area. I don't know if they have anyone here tonight to speak to that, but that's where the request generated, and we felt that that was a council decision to make that call.
What questions do we have for Chairman on this or anybody?
Those lights are still on that tree, right? From the Christmas season, we've never taken them off.
That's correct.
Okay. Someone asked me that, if we've gone to the trouble to take them off and all that. Okay, they're still there. Good, thank you.
They're not on, but they're still?
I mean?
Yes.
They're, they're?
They're attached to the tree.
They're on, off, they could be.
Yes. They're on, but they're not on.
They're there, but they're not on.
They're there, but they're not on. I got you. Thanks.
Very good question.
Yes, Bobby.
You know, I'm all in favor of businesses, private businesses, being able to have accent lighting and to be able to do as they want with their buildings, but, and I'm very much in favor of wayfinding signs, which we've talked about having out around the mall and for downtown, which is something we've talked about, but we really haven't effectuated yet. I think that when you, I'm kind of torn on this deal because here we have a city that has a department dedicated to energy conservation, and we pride ourselves on being, building a Leeds-certified building right behind City Hall here, the courts building, and I think a fire station. And the energy conservation is a big thing in Leeds, and yet it would seem rather inconsistent if the, if the city passed an ordinance, even though it's LED. It seems a bit confusing to me to have that, to be saying, we're all for Leeds, yet we think we can put this light on square. It just, it's kind of confusing to me and it seems a little inconsistent.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other comments, council? Yes, Brenda?
Well, I think it's important to, you know, that this, that they, this just is an allowance for them to do this. They don't have to, and if the public finds it, you know, unattractive, even doesn't like it, I'm sure we'll, you know, quit having them lit, but this is just gives them the ability to do so. So, I guess that's kind of where I stand right now. I want to hear from the public about this because I know there have been some people that are not supportive of this. And I would question now, this came from the A&amp;P Commission, but the City of Fayetteville would have to pay for the electricity, not the A&amp;P Commission?
We haven't had that discussion.
We haven't got that.
So, they, since they did recommend this, that there is a possibility, since Bobby's concern is with?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, the other item is, remember that the A&amp;P does manage certain events for the city's behalf. First Thursday is an event that they manage for us, so sometimes there are city events in these spaces that I certainly think is something we can have a dialogue about. It is miniscule in the scheme of the actual cost for that single lighted tree.
For a certain amount of time.
Okay, that's all I have now. My public comment.
Could you clarify if this came from Marilyn Heffner, the director, or the A&amp;P Commission itself?
Request of city staff was a telephone call from Marilyn Heffner. I don't know about the A&amp;P whether they took a vote. We have two members.
No, it wasn't some, it was something that was discussed. I personally would like some more clarification on this if Marilyn, I don't think she's here, but there was talk about the Crystal Bridges tree and that this would be sort of our whatever into that, into that type arena and the talk about the arts community. And there's a lot of good things, ideas around this, but I would prefer not to vote on it until maybe we had Marilyn explain a little bit more about the ideas around it. I mean, there's a lot of good here, but I think there's been also a lot of public comments to me. There's been some positive, but there's also been a lot of negative, and personally, I'm sort of torn on it as well, like Bobby is. And I know we're not, I know we're not, you know, stringing these trees into the bark and to what Brenda said, this is not permanent necessarily, and if we do turn it on and everybody doesn't like it, we turn it off. But I do agree that there are some issues here, and I'd request that Marilyn would maybe come and talk to us the next meeting or whenever.
Well, that's fine. Y'all want to have a public, a public comment we have on this? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council. You want to leave it on the first reading then?
Can I add one more question, please?
You bet.
If we are going to do, I mean, that's fine with me, but would it be appropriate to, to ask the A&amp;P Commission to perhaps amend this to say if they are willing to pay that bill, that it be made a part of this ordinance? That might be a little more palatable to some people.
And, you know, we may, we've got an A&amp;P Commission.
Monday, I was about to say.
I mean, we're going to be, we can discuss that before we ever get back to the council.
We'll dive into this pretty Monday, I promise everyone.
Yeah, we will.
Another question I have is, does the lighting of the tree add to light on the sidewalks? For those of us, I walk on the square at night in the dark often, is there any public safety benefit to having it on? Does it reduce the need for any other lights if it's on? Can we justify it in any way as a benefit to the public who uses the square at night? Do the lights add any benefit to public use?
I think we can, we can certainly take a look at that and see between now and the next meeting and see what that does in terms of the lights.
Too much light.
And I'd also like to?
I need more light, so if it would help, I might be more inclined.
Will.
And I haven't heard from the businesses on the square either, you know, I mean, if they're for it or against it. I mean, I think that's important too because those businesses are there every night. So, anyway.
That's good.
We'll get there.
We'll get you some more information, and Justin and I, we'll talk a little more about it, about the A&amp;P. Yes, Brenda?
Shouldn't we go ahead and move it to the second reading?
You can, if you want to.
And then just hold it there. I'd rather you go second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, go to the second reading. Lisa, would you please call the rub?
Petty?
No.
Tenet?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yeah.
Adams?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section 176.03 exemptions of the outdoor lighting chapter of the Unified Development Code to allow lights to remain on a tree on the square and to allow accent lighting on restaurant and bar patios.
We leave it right there then.
Mayor Majors has one question of the council. Is there any information additionally that you need on the other portion of the amendment which relates to the restaurant and patio, bar patio, or is this purely on the tree issue? Purely the tree?
Is it a possible safety help to the bars and patios too to have them lit? I mean, I would think so.
Well, we get a few calls from some of the bars and restaurants because we don't allow a lot of the lights to be on.
In general, this is more for ambiance, though. They're lit for safety, this is just more for the ambiance.
It's, yeah. Yes. Good point. Anyway, all right, well, let's move right along. Number five, ATM 11-4019, North Side MLK between Block and East Avenue Jacobs Appeal, resolution to grant an appeal of Jacobs and Mill Company, and to grant the curb cut variance on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard between Block and East Avenues. Who has that?
This property is located on the north side of Martin Luther King Boulevard between Block and East. Block and East. It's in a residential neighborhood, so it's going to be east of South School, Archibald Yale, several blocks actually. The property is owned in Neighborhood Conservation, contains approximately one acre. The original two parent tracts were recently subdivided into six lots that meet the Neighborhood Conservation ordinance requirements for an infill development of four single-family homes and two, two-family homes. The site, as I mentioned, is bounded by MLK on the south, got Block Avenue to the west and East Avenue to the west. The applicant is in the process of designing homes for these six new lots, and they're proposing rear-loaded garages that face on, with houses facing on to Block Avenue and East Avenue. This is in a traditional neighborhood style of development. If you look at the, actually, the houses around it, it's very similarly, they're facing the, the interior streets as well. And the applicant is proposing for this particular, the reason why you all are seeing that, the applicant's proposing one shared curb cut onto MLK for those six lots. This requires a variance because all of those lots don't necessarily have right, a specific right to access under our Access Management Ordinance, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. The ordinance states that when there's a higher classification street, if you have a property that has a higher classification street and a lower classification streets, really you should access the lower one. In this particular case, that could result in six curb cuts as opposed to the one that the applicant's proposing. You'll notice in your minutes, and we discussed it a little bit at the agenda session, the planning commission was split on this vote. I believe the vote was three of five, so very split on what, what should occur. But if you look at the site, and I believe the applicant's here to show you some images, essentially, on the north side of the property, there's an alley. It's not a, it's just a platted alley, so it's really basically a tree line all across the entire property. When you go out and walk it, it's some mature trees, it's really kind of a screen between this property and the properties to the north. Those, those would have to come down in order to access this alley, and I believe that's one of the factors that, that some of the planning commissioners were concerned about, and it's certainly a factor that the applicant's concerned about. This requires a variance, however, because of request to access Martin Luther King. The access would be generally in the location where the existing curb cut is today, that accessed a single-family home in that property. And it was our finding that one shared access point at this location is both safer and more desirable than six individual curb cuts, whether, wherever those are located, accessing the new lots. The curb cuts at the safest functional location, we feel, it's also shared, and it would meet the intent of the Access Management Ordinance, so therefore, staff did recommend approval. And I believe the applicant is also here to, to make a very brief presentation.
All right, assume that the council would like to see the presentation by the applicant?
Yes.
So the applicant can come forward.
My name's Todd Jacobs. I'm with the Jacobs Newell Company. I am one of the owners, partners of this company. We started our company about two, three years ago. It's been almost four years. Jeremy and I were talking before I was last here to do a presentation back in the heyday of building. Since that time, we looked at a new business model of building small-scale infill projects. And what we have is, on the Block and East project is a new project that we're ready to start, actually tomorrow, if we can get this variance approved for the building permits and bring these houses to market the first of June. I've got just a quick presentation to kind of show you what's been going on since the city council approved the Walker Park master plan that helped really trigger what allowed for investment dollars and people like us to come in and reinvest. We find a really high demand, and people want to live downtown, but there's not a lot of new housing stock. There's a lot of older stuff, but what we find in our demographics is we have a lot of younger people, professionals, retirees, and they are a lot more social, so they don't really want to be spending every weekend going to Lowe's to help, you know, try to put their house back together. This is kind of a marketing map that we help, because we have a lot of people relocating to Fayetteville, and they're not really familiar with the main amenities. So what we created was a map, this is kind of a map we used to do back in the day for presentations of how walkable an area was. So where number four, number three is right where we're at, that's the square, town center. So mostly where we focus is obviously south of, of College, Archibald Yale. That's the main bulk of where we build. So we've got, we've built 11 houses to date in this area. We've torn down four abandoned houses that were on the verge of being, just falling in. We've removed about 10 dump truck loads of debris in this neighborhood. So the project tonight is really number five, actually, I'm sorry, number two, which is the Block and East, which is, we'll just get the next graphic, my help, is four single-family homes and two duplexes. The duplexes are on the end unit of what would be Sixth Street. So this is a, a graphic looking of East Avenue. So you can see two single-family homes, the duplex at the end, since I think those may be rentals. And then you can see in the back is alley loaded, so we are, we have carports, garages in the back, granny units. The lot here, the house on the very end, we've already sold that lot to a couple to, from Nebraska, that's going to be relocating here this summer, and will be building them a accessory dwelling unit in the back for their actual office, since they'll be moving their corporate documents to Arkansas. So the big thing that we look at from a design point of view, marketing and selling, and overall, what's best for the neighborhood is, you can see there's no curb cuts along East Avenue, and you would have none on Block. So typically, these are four, these are 40-foot wide, so we would have to be curb cuts for every lot, and then there's going to be a carport, or there's going to be some type of garage door, which we don't like typically to use for our type of projects. This will be one of the first projects we actually get the alley loaded. If you can back up one slide. The difference, what's difference about Martin Luther King on this section is, now, we've been there almost a year working, is this is a residential neighborhood. The speed limit's 25 miles per hour. It's very active with pedestrians, very active with bicycle people. What we think is to have one curb cut on Sixth Street, which is residential, 25 miles per hour, is much more safer than having six curb, six new curb cuts on East and Block. There's existing, another reason we like to build in South Fayetteville is because of the existing trees. On this property to the north, and when these old platted alleys never got built, is now we've got mature trees. And I really don't want to be the one to tell the neighbors that we're taking those trees out for an alley. Again, you would have less curb cuts on Block and East. You'd have that really nice streetscape. And overall, that would make for super extremely attractive to the neighborhood, not to be able to see, to have those cars parked in back, your trash parked in back. So that's a, a basic site plan. East Avenue is on your right-hand side, MLK to the south, so you can see the curb cut is directly in the middle. There's already a curb cut there, existing driveway, we're basically lining up with it. And then Block and Avenue on the other side. So that site plan matches up with your graphic. I think there might be one more. So this is a graphic we're working on for Block Avenue. As you can see, this wouldn't look like without curb cuts. We'd have a nice lot, houses lined up in a row, up close to the sidewalk, so very, have a nice street presence to it. And this is our preferred building, is to have it alley loaded. And I wouldn't be here if we didn't think Sixth Street wasn't residential. This section is residential, you know, over the next, between what we've built now and the next 18 months, now we're looking at bringing value of close to $7.5 million to this area. So we're here every day. We've built 11. We're ready to start Block and East tomorrow. We're starting two more on our Church Street project. We're starting some row homes next to what used to be Sycamore Row Homes or Lofts back in the day, next to Walgreens. And so overall, we've committed our time and resources to this area for the next 12, 18 months. The people we see living here love the area. They like to be able to get this close to downtown, the walkable. We promote the trail extension hopefully from Frisco into Walker Park. So overall, we really like to see this as an alley-loaded project versus us having to do carports and the curb cuts on the street. I think this will be, once you see it built out, I think, you know, 12 months from now, you drive by, you'll remember making, yeah, that was the right decision to do one curb cut versus six. So that's our kind of presentation and update of what's going on in Walker Park. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What questions do we have? Yes, Bobby?
Yes, I like your idea, number one. Number two, could you give me an idea of the approximate, and I'm sure they may vary, approximate size feet of the single-family dwellings and approximate cost?
What we like to do is bring different products, different price points. On single-family, we go anywhere from 1,100 square feet up to about 2,400 square feet. Price range, I would go from 1,700, 75,000 to, I don't know, 2, 215. And all of our houses are built under the Energy Star program, and we've built houses under the National Home Builders Green. And I think coming up next week, we're fixing to announce that we're going to move to the, to the lead for all of our homes. We've done the checklist, and most of ours will check out at gold as we've built right now, so.
One more question. In your experience, you've been doing this and planning, you know, when you look, when you look, say, from, from School Street and MLK down towards Block and, and East, I mean, and South Street down there, how long do you think this is, once these were built, and it sounds like you're around there in other places, do you think this will have an effect to, to move on southeast?
I think you need another proven two years of track record on the financial side for banks or investors to be able to go outside. The good thing about South Fayetteville is, when I do that map and we do our presentation to bankers, now they can identify with that five-minute walk or 10-minute to downtown. So we've looked at other areas, but right now, it seems a little too risky. I think you're going to have to pick, hopefully, some quality projects that come on, or you need to be able to assemble a big enough track where you can say, "I'm going to be here for two years. This is what we're going to build, this is what we're committed to," and people will tend to feed off that. But, so South Fayetteville had a lot of assets to build off of already, so that helped. If you go outside, the problem we see is, it has to be a bigger project to kind of anchor that community or neighborhood to get it going. So that's going to be a tough one to figure out.
Thank you.
Question?
But to have that two years or something, getting started quicker accelerates that whole thing.
Yeah. Jeremy, can you go back to the very beginning? The story we like to tell initially, the, go back, these are two we just completed right now. A year ago, we looked at this project and said, my partner and I said, "Is this project doable? Can we make it work?" And we said, "Yes, let's commit to it." We took our main bankers to this project, we showed them some of the previous ones, they liked it. We came to this one, and this was the roughest piece to date. And the banker wouldn't get out of the truck and said, "Yeah, that's a great concept, but what else you got?" And I said, "This is it." He said, "Well, come see me." So I came back and see him a year from now, and he helped us finance Block and East. So what we've learned in the financial community is, you have to treat your projects as a planning project. You can't just come in because it's a different model infill, it's not a subdivision, so. Anyway, a year, a year later, that same banker helped us do Block and East, he's ready to help us get two houses going, so.
I mean, did you say, if you get this tonight, you get these on the market in this particular case, in this particular?
June 1st, so our plans are done, permits are ready, I'm ready to turn them in tomorrow morning before alley loaded to go. And then we want to bring them to market by June 1st. Obviously, it's the hottest selling season, but.
Yeah. Get the new houses there by that time, good.
Other questions do we have? The council?
Yes. How wide are those houses?
These, uh, these are on 28-foot wide lots. So this property is owned downtown general. So that property allows for greater density to, to get more people down. So these were really educational for us. So they're 28 feet wide and I think it's 70 feet deep. The house on the left is, is our model home, so we've kind of set an office there and fully staged it where people can see all the other projects. And then, and then the house on the right, we just leased, and they're actually moving in, so.
Okay, any other question, Todd? Thank you.
Thank you.
What other public comment do we have on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Hugh Earnest. I'm on the Fayetteville Planning Commission. And as Mr. Paint pointed out, we voted this down five to three for some very, for some very serious and very difficult reasons. First of all, I want to commend Newell and Jacobs. I've sat out and talked to Jake Newell in front of these, in front of these projects. These are wonderful, tremendous houses for South Fayetteville. But the issue that several of us on the planning commission had is the Access Management Ordinance that you passed in 2008 unanimously. And this is not a residential street, it's a collector's street. And there are lower functional classification streets on both Block and East that, where this project can be accessed. I certainly understand, and I went out and drove this project, I, I went in the abandoned single ingress that he wants to use off of, off of MLK, and it certainly will work. But there were several people on the commission who said there are other designs that are possible where you can ingress and egress off Block and East with an alley. There are problems with the vegetation behind that, and I certainly understand that they have a design that they can go forward with, but I just ask you from a macro perspective to look at the importance of protecting an ordinance that you passed unanimously in 2008 to limit where possible ingress and egress to collector and arterial streets. And I don't think Mr. Paint disagrees with that. We've had several debates about ingress and egress on, on arterials and collectors over the last three or four months at both this level and the commission level. That's my comments.
Okay, y'all have any questions, Mr. Earnest? Okay, thank you, Hugh. Any other public comment on this?
Well, my comments a little different. I didn't, I hadn't seen these plans, but I've watched that lot for years, probably that whole lot.
Aubrey, would you introduce yourself?
Aubrey Shepherd, South Belwood resident. The, that lot is the perfect example of a natural rain garden. If you go by there, the southeast corner holds water after rainfall, it slowly soaks in, exactly what people have talked about building. And I have published photos of that repeatedly. Now, these, these young men are doing a great job of what they're doing for the reasons they're doing it. But the two examples, two different lots, well, actually, one, two, three, four, maybe total now of theirs in that area, do not hold any water. You're building in neighborhood conservation. This is a drawback to neighborhood conservation that wasn't talked about much when it was passed. The purpose of neighborhood conservation is good, but when you use the word conservation on something that's going to increase flooding, fail to decrease pollution of the water downstream, and of course, this goes into, this particular one goes directly into Tanglewood Branch. If you look, if somebody would show us the picture again, Jeremy, please, sir, sorry, Sorry, I didn't dress up. It's just what I had on, and I was watching, I looked at you on internet and glad to see you're talking about this. But anyway, the southeast corner, I think standing on the ground in the southeast corner would be the very edge of the repairing zone of Tanglewood Branch at that point. Jeremy, maybe, I assume that that was measured, but anyway, there's a street, two streets meet in that corner. And if, if you see the southeast corner over here, where East Avenue comes to MLK, Lot Three is the one that has held water the best all these years, the house in the center. And if I'd bought this and wanted to build on it, I would have kept that house because it was quite good and people had lived in it, and I think they were getting more than $600 a month rent the last renter there. But anyway, I am very pleased that they're not trying to use the alley easement there. That would be, well, I'm sorry.
Try and keep it with the access.
Well, these, these are reasons that it's good to use one driveway. It's super terrific that they're not asking to destroy the timber on the upper end. And I know landowners above that appreciate keeping barrier and the values that they get, such as shade from the south on their property and their yards up there. So that's great, that's an important thing. But I agree with Hugh that the single curb cut in the middle does put the traffic out into the main street. But I had to imagine just what they were going to do with driveways as they've done this. But this lot down here, you know, is going to be, well, if, if you look over just barely into that next lot, the stream comes right across here. So from that corner where the lot's drawn, not the street, the curb, it's probably 50 feet to the stream bank in two directions there. So, you know, we're, we're seeing the potential to keep violating our own streamside ordinance, even though it's just newly passed by you guys in the past, what, year and a half or whatever? Or was it just this past April, it's less than a year? So, or it went into effect first of April. So this is already a paved place. This is what, a street wouldn't be allowed there if we took ourselves seriously on trying to protect the stream. But a stream, a street is there, so.
Hang on, just a minute. Jeremy, are we in violation of the streamside protection ordinance?
I'm looking now, I don't, I don't think that buffer is anywhere close to this property, but I'll look right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, that may be a problem that, we do have to look at the geography as well as the geology. But, you know, you can, you can throw a rock from the middle of the main lot there, or baseball, very easily, and throw it in the creek, if you throw it to the southeast, or you throw it to the east across there. So what I'm saying is that this is a place that should be retained with its natural soil and the water captured there, because just up East Avenue to the north, these gentlemen have built two pieces of property. of property, one's building right now. It's paved all the way out to the edges of the footprint of the house and the garage. There are trees on the sides that have been left. There are trees that part up, part, well, the ones on the north side of that lot, huge tree that was not taken out, they took out several. But its roots are covered with a chunk of cinder blocks this, uh, this week, I believe. The ones on the right are covered with red dirt, and the building is way under the drip line of that one. Now, these, these are things that are inevitable if you allow, what is it, ten lots per acre and expect a house that's big enough for a family to live in. So at the corner of South Street and East Avenue, these gentlemen built two houses on a lot that was previously a, a very nice, uh, small, partially timbered piece of land. There's nowhere there to catch any water, just a block, excuse me again, uh, because I wasn't planning to talk until I saw this on TV. But a block to the west at the intersection of Church and, um, MLK, and it goes down to the end of that, uh, block down across the street from Wiggins Church, uh, to Seventh Street. That has now got three nice buildings up there, similar type. It has nowhere left to catch water now because most of it's had red dirt spread on, on it already. And when they build two more, it won't. So what I'm saying is, we've got to remember the watershed in the efforts we've made to try to protect Beaver Lake from pollution and from the silt that runs off when you're constructing these places and flooding immediately downstream. Flooding from all of these lots we're talking about now going down, uh, that Spout Spring branch, I hope I didn't say Tanglewood, because Tanglewood and Spout Spring meet a few blocks south of there, slightly southeast on the edge of Walker Park. So that lot he just mentioned, uh, one of the gentlemen mentioned, they will be building two more, so that'll be six and a half block stretch. I think they may own another piece of property down there that they want to work on. So somewhere, this small, single-family development style in this kind of neighborhood that already has houses built right down to the stream banks in many places is being allowed, and that's being ignored. So what's my opinion on this?
Okay, okay.
I would personally allow that one curb cut in the middle of the block since it's already there. Not, I wouldn't have recommended it if it hadn't been there. And the reason is that it does protect those, uh, shaded big old trees. And they're similar trees to the ones that were taken out of the sale barn property on the, uh, bank of Tanglewood, Tanglewood Branch just in the last few weeks as they, uh, started working on the, uh, apartments by the National Cemetery. So, you know, you, you've got to see the whole town and the whole geography and where's the water go. And maybe we asked Mr. Paint about the, how close his map shows the, uh, that corner to the, uh, water itself, please, sir.
Okay, thank you, Auburn. Who else from, who else from the public would like to address this? You see none, I will bring it back to the council. All righty then. Now, what we have before us is an appeal. Kit, would you like to explain all that, what exactly?
Yeah, the appeal of the burden will be on the people that are launching the appeal, which in this case is developer. If you remember, I did draft a resolution that's in your packet. But after consulting with Jeremy, I have a replacement resolution. Instead of having two conditions, it has three. It divides up and requires that they have a, an easement. They must file a shared access easement before they can get building permits, but they don't have to build their driveway until they want to receive a certificate of occupancy. And this is primarily because of financing issues that oftentimes they'll have to have building permits before they can get the financing. And so they don't need to build the driveway before they get any financing. So I think Jeremy looked at this and thinks it's okay. Let me hand this out to you.
Sure.
For your consideration. This would be that if you want to grant the appeal and approve the plan basically as submitted by the, uh, developer, then this is what you would pass.
Thank you.
And that would require five affirmative votes. If you do not want to grant the appeal, but instead you want to, uh, follow with what the Planning Commission did, then you would simply vote against this resolution.
So a yes vote would, would be in favor of the appeal, of course.
Yes, there'd be, there needs to be a motion on this particular resolution to pass. And if it does not pass, then the commission's decision is upheld. If it does pass, then it will be reversed.
Okay, have I got that?
Yes, I'm sure.
Thank you, Brandon. We have a motion and a second to pass this resolution, is that correct?
That's correct.
But, but.
But that hooks up with the appeal.
If we want to, if we don't want to pass, in other words, if we want to support this project, we would vote against. No, this project, uh, this is an appeal, in fact, to allow the project as it has been presented to you tonight.
That's why I want to be clear with everybody. Everybody good now?
Wait, give us that one more time. I thought you voted yes on this resolution if you wanted to approve the appeal.
Yes. Approve the appeal and approve the project.
That approves the project.
And let me, let me read the conditions of approval for the developer, just so that they know what, what, uh, is being suggested here. It would, it would permit the shared curb cut on Martin Luther King Boulevard, uh, with the following conditions. Number one, that Jacob's and Newell Company's property shall be limited to one shared curb cut onto Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, as shown on the submitted site plan. Number two, Jacob and Newell's company shall file a shared access easement, providing access rights for all six lots prior to receiving building permits for the six residential structures. And number three, Jacob and Newell shall construct the full driveway as shown on the site plan before certificate of occupancy can be obtained for any of the residential structures.
Now, could I ask the city attorney a question?
Yes, sir.
Now, could we go ahead, now I'm just throwing this out here so everybody has a sinking spell here, and you vote for the appeal and then vote for the resolution, or can we do them both together?
I think you need to do it all together because you can't just grant an appeal without, without the conditions in there. There should be conditions.
That's what I want to, that's what I'll make clear.
Make your point.
Yes, you may.
I was just going to say, with all due respect to Hugh, um, and, and the logic that you're pertaining to us here, which is, we did do that. I used to be, at one time, I wasn't much of an advocate of, um, of, uh, rebuilding the core of the city, uh, you know. Infill development, but I was put through a brief school, uh, reconditioning class by
A reeducation class?
Yes. And, uh, anyway, I, you know, I helped, I was one of the sponsors on, in ordinance to just, to try to, uh, allow things just like this to happen where we could refill the center of our city and not have to always go to the outskirts. I think it would be rather inconsistent of me. That's one of the reasons I, I will support this. Secondly, like I said the other day, I'm sixty-three years old, and when I was a youth, I had a paper out down in that part of town. And, uh, I've watched it for years and years and years. And this is the start of, of, um, a renaissance or rejuvenation of that area. And that's the reason I ask you about how long you think it would take to catch on. I think it, I think it will be, I think people that are skeptical, if they'll stand back and watch, I think it's going to have a catching effect, and I think it's going to be good for everybody involved. Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome.
Thanks for the training, Jeremy.
Yes, Matt.
Well, I guess we, we all owe Jeremy a debt of gratitude for his work with Alderman Farrell. But seriously, uh, I wanted to say two things, uh, which is, I think we all know that a developed lot is never going to be as good as an undeveloped lot when it comes to stormwater management. But I've looked at the Jacob's Newell properties around town during rains. I've seen pictures during the heaviest rains, and truthfully, they handle rainwater better than any other development in town. But I, I think that's something to note. Number two, to the, uh, from a macro perspective, um, all things being equal, I think that I'm going to support this decision because, number one, I think it's important to preserve the trees, and, and that shouldn't be underestimated. It takes a long time to grow mature trees back, and they provide a lot of substantial and measurable benefits. Number two, uh, even if there is a substantial amount of traffic on that street, I do think it's residential in nature. Even from the corner at College through Wood, and as we've seen new development take place around the intersection of Huntsville, even going out to that point, uh, I think that if we look at the long-term trends, uh, Fifteenth Street is actually more capable of heavy, of handling heavy traffic loads. And as we look at the population expand, you know, doubling by twenty thirty or twenty forty, and we see the traffics and the traffic counts increase accordingly, the majority of that new load is going to end up on Fifteenth Street. At least that's my hope. And I hope that by encouraging development patterns like what we've got before us tonight in places like this location on MLK, we'll actually hedge our bets for that trend. So that's why I'll support it.
Okay, any other comments, council on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, pass the resolution and support the appeal, all in one vote. Everybody good with that? That's a yes vote, all right? Now, vote would be against the books. So with that, just nine final comments, this is what you please call the roll.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. All right, number six, amend Chapter one fifty-one definition of family. An ordinance to amend the definition of family found in Chapter one fifty-one, definitions of the Unified Development Code to allow the city council to authorize up to five unrelated persons in some units of a planned zoning district. Kit?
Whereas the current definition of family in the Unified Development Code has been in effect for over the last decade and has been approved by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development after being challenged by a landlord or tenant. And whereas the current definition of family in the Unified Development Code limits the number of unrelated individuals in a housing unit to three for single-family districts and four in multifamily districts in order to protect neighborhoods. And whereas in rare circumstances and with appropriate safeguards, the city council should be authorized to allow up to five unrelated persons in a unit within a planned zoning district designed for such occupancy. Now, therefore, it being resolved by the city council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One. And the city council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeals the current definition of family found in the definitions chapter of the Unified Development Code and enacts a new definition of family as shown below. Family zoning. In our age, neighborhood conservation and all single-family districts, including single-family planned zoning districts, a family is no more than three persons unless all are related and occupy the dwelling as a single housekeeping unit. In all other zoning districts where residential uses are permitted, a family is no more than four persons unless all are related and occupy the dwelling as a single housekeeping unit, with the exception that the city council may permit a definition of family as no more than five persons unless all are related and occupy the dwelling as a single housekeeping unit in a specific planned zoning district with proper safeguards for the surrounding neighborhood, such as requiring that each five-person unit must be placed within a freestanding structure of not more than two stories and be buffered from other residential districts outside the planned zoning district. Persons are related for purposes of this definition if they are related by blood, marriage, adoption, guardianship, or other duly authorized custodial relationship. The definition of family does not include fraternities, sororities, clubs, or institutional Mr. Mayor, the, I think, uh, this was brought forward by Alderman, uh, Rhonda Adams, and I don't know if you have.
Teddy?
Alderman Petty.
And Alderman Petty, I'm sorry, that's right.
She did all the work, that's okay.
And I should also know that the, uh, the only major change on this was to, uh, allow in fairly rare circumstances a definition of family to include up to five unrelated purposes specifically authorized and allowed by the city council in a planned zoning district with appropriate safeguards.
Okay. All right, Rhonda, would you or Matt like to start off?
Matt, would you like to go first?
Sure. I have to admit, whenever Councilmember Adams first brought this to my attention, I balked a little bit because I think that this issue, um, pretty much since it's been put in place has been a little bit contentious, people on both sides. I think we all recognize that. And the first thing I did was I sent an email to Jeremy Payt asking, uh, how it was currently enforced with regards to three things, single-family districts, multifamily districts, and planned zoning districts. He told me what I already knew about single, single-family and multifamily districts, which, uh, is basically that you're looking at a limit of three people for a single family and four people for multifamily. But he surprised me when he said that when it comes to planned zoning districts, there basically aren't any rules. And so what this does, it's very simple, is it makes it apply to planned zoning districts. It goes one step farther and it says, if you are bringing forward a PZD to the council and you want to go through all of the scrutiny to make the request that we allow you five persons per household, then you're allowed to make the request. But that's all we're going to allow you is to make the request. It doesn't guarantee anything. And that's the only way that it goes farther than what's already there on the books.
Okay, Rhonda?
Very well said, Matthew, thank you very much. I couldn't say it better. I do think that, uh, we had an example here tonight of, of an appeal because of an ordinance being set where future, um, ideas may not have been thought of at that time. And so for me, this allows the people to, to ask, to petition. It's not a common law issue, but I do believe it out. It allows people to petition, to ask for something that wasn't thought of or planned for when the ordinance was fir-, when the, the three and four was first set. And again, I like the stress Alderman Petty that you made on this, just as a, as allowance for a request for things that we, certainly I, haven't thought of in the past and might, uh, make it possible for groups to live together legally in a planned, well, designed for such, uh, living arrangements so that perhaps as the university grows and as the population of the city grows, people will choose to do so legally in a planned development rather than live in our neighborhoods as they do and will probably always do at some level illegally in groups of more than three. This would make a more affordable option for those who'd like to have a more homelike residence. If the city council approved it. Should add that at the end of everyone.
Yes, you may.
Um, just a couple, uh, I got a call from a guy, and he wanted to know if, if brother-in-law and mother-in-law were considered relatives in the house. I said I'd get it clarified.
They are.
Okay.
They are.
You might not, you might not want your brother-in-law to be included, but they are.
Okay, uh, I looked here, maybe I missed it. Does staff have a position on this?
I would say that, um, obviously, Alderman Adams brought this to our attention. We had concerns with it from, from the beginning as well when we first heard of it, just as Matthew mentioned. What I was charged to do by the mayor and, and chief of staff was to present something that we felt like we can enforce, um, that's something we felt like, um, would resolve some of the concerns, um, that, that we see with some of these issues. However, we made it very clear that it's not going to, it's not going to resolve the more than three and the enforcement of more than four in neighborhoods that we have today. So what we, our attempt was to draft an ordinance that we felt should be kept at the highest level at the elected body to make a final decision. But it would not take out the recommendation of a staff person and the planning commission as part of a, a planned zoning district process. So, um, as, as Alderman Petty mentioned, this is, this is a process that, as you all know, a planned zoning district. planned zoning district starts at a staff level with a submittal. It goes through a technical plot review, subdivision committee, and planning commission recommendation before it ever gets to you. So hopefully, a lot of those issues that could be presented would be hammered out before they got to you. However, a PZD could come before you and they're requesting as a separate part of the PZD that they have a five-person unit or more than one five-person unit, and you simply don't feel like it's an appropriate application for that site. You can still approve the PZD and not have the five persons. So that, it's not a, it's not an all or nothing kind of application in that regard.
Do you see any downsides to it, Jeremy?
You know, I think that what we're looking at in some ways is a density bonus because you're getting one more person in each dwelling unit. So that's one more car, that's one more bike rack, that's one more, whatever it happens to be comes with one more person. So I think the downside is, is it's going to take a level of detail for the applicant to present something to make sure those safeguards are in place. It's not going to fit in every, it's not going to fit on every lot.
Heavily scrutinized.
I believe you're correct.
I'd like to add a couple of things to that. First, we did give some direction to Jeremy on the mayor's positions and discussion. And one of those was that we would not support this change as a use by right without coming to the council at all. It has too much of a history, as many of you up here know, and we think it needs the level of scrutiny at the council elected official level. We did not support it being done in a conditional use format where it went to an appointed planning commission body. Again, we felt it needed to be done by the people who had to earn a vote and listen to the constituency of the city because of the long history on it. We also felt like, much as we asked citizens to do is to put their faith in their elected officials, that they will consider all of those items in weighing this, we thought that was appropriate place for it to take place. And that's the information we communicated to Councilmember Adams when she first had this discussion with us. The other item, I think, that we would say is that this is an issue that's going to be very real, that the city is going to deal with over the next several years with the growth of the university. And having, you know, I can appreciate both Matthew and Mark's position because having been an alderman in their ward, which is very much impacted by student housing, I can remember not tens, but hundreds of phone calls through my term about people concerned about our traditional residential neighborhoods functioning like dormitories or really un, in their mind, unregulated methods of what was coveted as a traditional family neighborhood turning into something else. And so, you know, what we felt like is, it isn't going to solve where we have that happen today, but if we have an opportunity for people to bring a project to the council that may be in future planning as the city grows through the student addition of the university, you know, they're talking about 1,500 students a year, I think 28,000 or something may be the new goal, that if we had developments planning that allowed for the original plan to address this, they might be acceptable, they might bring things forward about management companies or things that would make this a more acceptable area because we are also seeing a greater demand for unrelated people living together. You know, four or five students grow up, come to school together, they want to live together. And so how do we provide a venue that might make that legal in the best placement? Unregulated and undiscussed at this level allows us to end up with subdivisions that were designed traditionally that are functioning the way that our problem is. So that was our rationale behind this discussion.
I think Mark.
I think when I look at this, I do recall the history very vividly because it was a lot of activity in my direct neighborhood. And I think that you don't look at the addition of one person here, you look at the pyramid of people of unrelated families, unrelated families. So you have five individuals with five brothers and 10 cousins and 15 second cousins. And so what you get is a pyramid of growth in a residential area, and to me, that is institutional. If we want to call this student housing, then that is a dormitory and we currently have in place, right, Jeremy? An institutional code that would define what a dormitory is. And so bringing the argument back from a historical perspective, when we were looking at this as a development specifically in an area that was a large area, kind of long and slender, we felt like that if they wanted to have group housing and call it a dormitory, there would be the code there. Four individuals, okay, four could be 16, that's what I'm saying here, five could be 20. And so you're just getting this pyramid of growth on unrelated individuals. And so that's my concern. I don't think that anyone can come in with a PZD and say, we have this for five, five unrelated individuals and 10 years down the road, the enforcement of that is five individuals. It's five, it's the pyramid of five that could turn into 10. And so that is my concern whenever we're looking at the enforcement of this in the long run. And again, we do have an institutional code already that defines what a dormitory is. If it's a dormitory, call it a dormitory.
Okay. Matt?
I do have a comment first. Kit, could you clarify what Mark is suggesting, that this might allow more than five people to live in the same house?
No. To be, to have more than five or more than three or more than four, they all have to be unrelated. I mean, all have to be related and operating as a single housekeeping unit. So that if you have three friends who are not related, they can't bring one of their brothers in. They can't bring their father in because then you would have four people who are not all related. Only two of them would be related, the other two would not be related. Therefore, that would be in violation of our current definition. Now, of course, we see problems where, and issues about, are they living there or not? Are there girlfriends and boyfriends that kind of hang out? And so there's sometimes this difficulty in proof to try to establish that maybe there are more people living in this house than is legal. So there's difficulties in enforcing this. We have enforced it in the past, we will continue to try to enforce it in the future. This doesn't really go toward that enforcement, except that it does make it potentially legal if the city council approves, for a planned zoning district to have a structure that would actually allow five unrelated people legally. So that if somebody wants to be legal and have more than four people in there, it is potentially possible if you all would approve. But even then, you can't have six. You know, you can't have five unrelated people and then somebody brings their brother in. That's six that aren't all related, and therefore, that would be a violation.
Okay. Justin?
Thank you, Kit. My comment was, while we do have existing zoning ordinances for these kinds of developments, we also have existing ordinances for single-family housing, for multifamily housing, for all kinds of uses. And yet still, we have seen PZDs come forward for similar uses. We've seen a lot less, a lot less of those come forward in the past few years, especially since we passed form-based zoning codes, because it makes more sense with the new codes for developers to use something that's already there rather than to write one from scratch. But it may be the case that even if a developer is building single-family homes or multifamily homes or student housing, that they want to do something that's a little bit different than what's on the books. And that's the only reason a PZD would be used and the only way this would come forward. I think it'd be very rare. My second comment is that I don't think that this is just about students, even though that's how the discussion has been characterized so far. Something that was pointed out to me is that if you look at the newest, best assisted living communities, they're built in very similar ways. You see five or six bedrooms around a suite, and then you see another suite and another suite. A vast improvement over assisted living designs of the past. That's another example of something that may come forward where this request could be made. And again, it would only be a request, the council would have to have a full discussion, probably something this contentious, three full readings. It'd be a very public process to even ask the question, let alone get it approved.
Okay. Who else?
Next public comment, too.
Let me get all the counsel.
I've just got a quick comment. And let me say, I'm not necessarily against this. My main concern is around the enforcement question. My concern is, no matter how well The Times or The Flyer or whoever writes this up when this is finished, I do think people are headline readers for the most part, and I think you're going to have some sentiment of, hey, we get to, we get one extra slot. We get, we don't have to watch it as close in different neighborhoods. And what I don't want are us to set up an enforcement issue here, and I don't know if that's the police chief's comment to make or whatever, but I just want to make sure we're not setting up something that they think, whoever's going to do the enforcement of this, that we're creating more harm for them. I don't think that it's going to happen that often, but I just think that some people are going to find this as, you know, just an automatic extra car slot, an extra person in the house, and that's more enforcement on our end. I just want to make sure we're not causing a problem that way.
Okay. Mark?
Another issue that we have to talk about is if there's five individuals living in an area and it's classified as institutional, such as assisted living, there's additional safety requirements that is institutional that would not necessarily be involved in a residential situation. And I think that that is important whenever you're looking at high-capacity, high-density dwellings.
Okay. Anybody else? Before you go to public comment. Okay. We will take public comment now. Everybody gets one turn to microphone. Introduce yourself, please. And keep the comments to the chair so we don't get engaged with it often. All right? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Corbin. I am a graduate from the University of Arkansas, and I am currently in my third and final year of law school. I own a three-bedroom house on Lyndale Avenue, which is directly in front of the law school. Kind of haunts me, actually. But I've never violated the ordinance of only allowing three people to live together in the past 10 years that I've owned that house, nor do I plan to do so. But I am here to speak on behalf of my fellow law students. I'm the president of the Student Bar Association, and it is my job and it's my job to listen to the concerns of the student of the law school. Some of those concerns that come up every single year is how expensive law school is and how to cut back on cost and make law school more affordable. Time after time again, things that come up are living arrangements. And this is very difficult when you only allow three people, for example, to be living together that are not related. However, when you allow four to five people to move in together, those, the living expenses and the cost can drastically be reduced. Why is this so important? Well, it's quite simple in the fact that the more students can save in housing means the more money that they also get to invest in local businesses. And, you know, the students, we, like, we really help Fayetteville and we invest a lot of our money in Fayetteville, and we keep Fayetteville running to the best of our abilities. And I think that y'all as city council members should give back to the students whenever it's possible. And this is possible for you to do tonight. Now, if you're worried about the noise and the parties and all that stuff, which are honest and good concerns, you know, that's not going to affect the neighborhoods that you and I live in today. And this new ordinance will allow for a new area in town, a zoned area, to be developed into a home with four to five people. It's not, again, it's not going to, it's not going to be a problem in your neighborhoods. Another thing regarding the noise and the parties, if you don't know this, law students work extremely hard, and I would say about 90% of the time. However, that other 10% of the time when they do want to go out, the very last place that they want to go out and have a party is at their house where they study all day long. They want to go out, they want to go to their local favorite bar, their local favorite restaurant, and they go out and they support the community. So today, I am asking that you support this ordinance change. Alderman Rhonda Adams and Alderman Matthew Perry, you know, y'all are great, and I know, I know Rhonda personally, and, you know, she loves Fayetteville and she knows the students better than anybody. And this new ordinance does what is best for our community, and our community is made up of students. And so let's help the future students of the University of Arkansas, and helping them helps Fayetteville. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else?
Good evening, counsel. Tracy Hauskins. Bet you thought you might get to tonight without listening to me, right? I've got a few comments about the ordinance, but before I do, I wanted to ask Jeremy a question about single-family residences in Fayetteville, what the height limitations are on those. Anyhow, if you don't mind, I figured you might have it in front of you, you might be able to look it up.
The height limitation?
The height limitation is single-family residential.
It depends on the zone, but most single-family zones are 45 feet.
Okay. Thanks. The reason that I ask that is, I think this is a great ordinance, and I think of its past, I think what you're going to see is new developments of student housing, cottage housing or what have you, five-bedroom houses, et cetera. I was very glad to hear about this coming through. I think that there's going to be a lot of opportunity to, for new developments in town to be able to utilize this to help with the student housing issue that we're going to be seeing in the next few years. The only part of the ordinance that I saw that gave me a little bit of pause is the restriction on number of floors. And that's why I asked that question. And Jeremy, in single-family residential, we've got a 45-foot height limit now. In this particular ordinance, while we're a city that encourages infill and density, et cetera, when you only have two floors and you're trying to build a five-bedroom structure, you have no choice but to go out, which actually reduces density. And so you also lose the opportunity to do some really cool projects, like maybe a small development of brownstone-type houses, et cetera, that are typically of three stories, or housing that is two stories with, you know, with extra bedrooms up in the gable of the house, et cetera. So I would encourage the council that before you pass this, that you take a look at that. I've really kind of, we've seen this at the planning commission level lately with, you know, all the height limitations, et cetera. And there's been a lot of talk among the commissioners of, we really can't understand why we are zoning for numbers of floors as opposed to height limitations. You know, really, what is the concern? Is it the height, the height that's the concern, or is the number of floors truly a concern? In other words, if you have a 36-foot-tall structure, why does the city really care if there's two floors in it or if there's three floors in it, especially, you know, if it's architecturally appealing or what have you? So that limitation of the two floors, I think, is anti-productive of the ordinance itself and actually what we're after, which would be more density, more infill, and new projects, and hopefully something, you know, some things with some nice architectural flair.
It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I hoped when we drafted this, that that two-story part is in the such-as part. So the draft, the ordinance is meant to not limit us to those sorts of things. So that, Kit, is that right?
That's correct. It says with-
Such as requiring-
With proper safeguards for the surrounding neighborhoods, such as requiring that each person be in a freestanding unit, not more than two stories. So that is a, I think what that might do, and it depends if this is what the city council wants, to make a suggestion more that this would look like more of a traditional house as opposed to some tower that's going to have several units stacked on each other, all with five-unit kind of apartments or condos or whatever in there. I think that the thought that I heard from the aldermen that were sponsoring this, and also in talking to Jeremy and Don and the mayor, was that the request or the need really was more of a more home side of, home type of atmosphere as opposed to an apartment building sort of atmosphere. And therefore, the suggestion that it might not be more than two stories and it might be freestanding as opposed to having everything plugged into a tower is something that, even though you're not requiring it, you're kind of indicating that you want to have that kind of development if you're going to consider five persons, but you're not required.
And I have the word brownstones in some of my notes. From the research I found, I wrote detached brownstones would be a possibility that would allow multiple single-family homes or detached townhouses on a property. But that is supposed to be in the such-as part, and I would assume that when the council looked at anything like that, we would be reminded that it's such-as.
Whenever I read, yeah, when I read through the, of course, I go to the little link or whatever. or whatever, when I read through, and I actually called Jesse and asked him about that, and we both kinda read through that together. And he was unsure, but he thought that it may be interpreted the same way that, and the thing we were reading through was maybe a suggestion to the council or what have you. And, and I agree with, with Kit in a lot of things. One of the things I would, I would call your attention to is, is down like the most prevalent places I can think of is around the Wilson Park area and down Lafayette and what have you. We're seeing a lot of old structures torn down and new structures built, okay? And Kit was talking about the scale of home and all that or what have you. Well, if you look at those new structures that are replacing it, you know, a lot of those are three-story structures, garages underneath, first and second floor, et cetera, and they're very, very homey. They're some of the nicest structures in town, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. Some good points, Mr. Hoskins.
Thanks.
Yes, Matt.
I think the point is that unless a proposal is within an overlay district, when you bring forward a PZD, all the rules are written from scratch. And it's very reasonable to expect the council, with the requests like the kind we're talking about, to impose things like height restrictions, or other restrictions, or buffer restrictions. There's no telling what those are going to be on each and every project, because it's going to be different for each and every project. And that's what we need to remember.
Okay. Yes.
Matthew, you, you recall how we, we evolved into those height restriction deals?
A little bit.
Started with the, I think it was, was it the Renaissance, the tall building that was gonna be built? And then it went from that to view shed. It was just kind of, you know, the molecule started moving and, so, you know, I like the idea that if, if it fit the pattern, bearing in mind, on, on stuff that's in the UDC right now, it's gonna be that way, but bearing in mind, if someone comes up with a good fit for something that's not, you know, way out of kilter high, that it's something that we could, and the planning commission, the planning staff looked at it, it's something we could consider. You know, I strongly suspect myself that when these things, when and if they start, you'll probably see them locate in proximity to each other in a PZD to cut down possibly on the, number one, they may have to have a smaller buffering deal, but secondly, to opposition, if you follow my drift. I think that's, I think that's what you, I think you'll see them developing, I'm not, I'm not gonna say quite.
Do we have any other public comments?
Well, since I can't see the site that any of these are gonna be built on yet, can't comment on their watershed effect, but there is this question right away about housing that you limit the number of residents in, because in student housing, where we have three separate bedrooms, obviously, these people are going to be dating, they may get engaged, they will certainly have guests that stay late, so you can't really decide how much time more than that number, the set legal number. What, how long does a person have to stay in 24 hours to count as a resident? So it's, you know, they tow cars out of the apartment complex next to my house, because they only have so many apartment, parking places, and somebody brings friends home and they block the other parking places, and here go the tow trucks two to three in the morning, dragging them out of the neighborhood, because they're all, you know, they have names on them, they all have a number. So I don't know if we have a right to even talk about, hey, me, people are living in a house, as long as the fire marshal doesn't come by, because, you know, you just can't regulate that. It's not regulated in most neighborhoods. So I don't have an opinion on this.
Okay. You've said all, let's say you don't have an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Very good. That may be the highlight of the evening, all right. What other public comments do we have? Okay. Seeing that, I'll bring it back to council. I assume this will be left where it is, or do you all, what do y'all wanna do?
I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready to vote, too, but out of fairness, I do think it's appropriate to leave it on the first reading, let this get out in the public a little bit and see who wants to comment.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Okay. So everybody's good right where it is?
Yes, sir.
All right. What announcements do we have? Have anything?
Well, I will mention that we do have openings on boards of admissions, and we're taking applications right now through this month, and then we'll interview at the first of March. So if you, if you have any question about it, you can look on site, or you can call the clerk's office, or call one of your aldermen.
Okay.
Mr. Maris?
Yes.
First, I wanna say that I think our deputy city clerk, Lisa, did a very good job tonight, but I wanna send out my best to our city clerk, Sandra, and wish her all speed and all health to her, and, and I know that we're all thinking about her and wishing her a speedy recovery and return.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. We're adjourned.